Good afternoon. Welcome. I'd like to call to order the San Jose City Council meeting for the afternoon of May 21st. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Jimenez.
Present.
Torres.
Present.
Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Davis.
Here.
Dwan.
Here.
Candelaus.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Batra.
Here.
Kamai.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great. Thank you. Now, if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Today's invocation will be given by Jared Carvajal from the 408 Collective, and Councilmember Ortiz will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. I am excited to present my final invocation for the month of May, which is Jared Carvajal. San Jose native, Jared Carvajal is an incredible jazz saxophonist, composer, and producer. He's well-known for his musical work for the Golden State Warriors and theme parks such as Disneyland and California's Great America, and has developed a strong presence in San Jose's musical scene. During the pandemic, Jared founded the 408 Collective Music, a funky powerhouse that performs all over the Bay Area. You can catch them at local venues like our very own Mama Kin's in downtown. Thank you for listening, and I kindly ask Jared to come on up, and let's kick this off. Thank you, Jared.
Good afternoon. Welcome. I'd like to call to order the San Jose City Council meeting for the afternoon of May 21st. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Jimenez.
Present.
Torres.
Present.
Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz. Davis.
Here.
Dwan.
Here.
Candelaus.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Batra.
Here.
Kamai.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great. Thank you. Now, if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Today's invocation will be given by Jared Carvajal from the 408 Collective, and Councilmember Ortiz will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. I am excited to present my final invocation for the month of May, which is Jared Carvajal. San Jose native, Jared Carvajal is an incredible jazz saxophonist, composer, and producer. He's well-known for his musical work for the Golden State Warriors and theme parks such as Disneyland and California's Great America, and has developed a strong presence in San Jose's musical scene. During the pandemic, Jared founded the 408 Collective Music, a funky powerhouse that performs all over the Bay Area. You can catch them at local venues like our very own Mama Kin's in downtown. Thank you for listening, and I kindly ask Jared to come on up, and let's kick this off. Thank you, Jared.
Wow. Thank you, Jared. That was impressive and beautiful. Thank you. We're on to our ceremonial items. Councilwoman Foley, if you'll join me at the podium, we will recognize and proclaim Global Accessibility Awareness Day.
Today, I'm here to proclaim Global Accessibility Awareness Day in the city of San Jose. Last Thursday, May 16th, marked the 13th time this day has been observed globally to raise awareness and promote digital accessibility practices. There are over 1 billion people worldwide living with disabilities who face barriers in accessing not only physical but also digital environments, impacting their ability to engage with digital content and essential online services. Our residents with disabilities face far too many barriers that prevent them from fully participating in society with independence. Creating accessible digital content is a shared responsibility, which includes spreading awareness and bringing others' attention to the need for digital access and inclusion. By supporting accessible technology and removing barriers to digital accessibility, we ensure that everyone, including those living with disabilities, have immediate access to information and to all city services. I would be mistaken if I did not take a moment to recognize the efforts of Rania Mozen in the city manager's office during today's ceremony, as she has been such an asset in developing initiatives in the city that can help improve accessibility and access to all activities for members of the disabled community. It's important to assure that the city continues to not only make forward progress and improve accessibility for all, but to go above and beyond in becoming a national leader for accessibility and inclusion. Today, I'd like to welcome Niraj Gupta from the Vista Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired in accepting this proclamation. For over 80 years, the Vista Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired has made it their mission to prove that vision loss is no longer a barrier to independence. Through evaluation, counseling, education, and training, Vista Center empowers youth, working adults, and seniors who are blind or have low vision to embrace life to the fullest. Niraj is the Community Relations and Operations Associate at the Vista Center and manages the volunteer program with over 70 volunteers, and assists in grant research to ensure this nonprofit can continue providing its program and services. I'd like to invite Niraj to share his story and say a few words before Mayor Mahan presents today's proclamation.
Let me bring the mic around to you.
Thank you.
Let me bring it down a little bit.
Thank you. Oops. Thank you, Councilmember Foley, and thank you all Councilmembers and the mayor. I really appreciate you having me here today. My name is Niraj Gupta, and I actually joined Vista Center about five years ago. First, as a client, I was experiencing my own vision loss. My background was in operations and finance in the corporate world, and as I started to experience my own vision loss, Vista Center really taught me all the skills I use today, including digital accessibility. In fact, if you think about it, how did I get here today, you might be wondering? It's because of my screen reader on my phone, I was able to pull up Uber and able to come here. Also, Vista Center taught me how to use the screen reader on my computer. So, the first day the computer started talking back to me, I thought, oh, wow, I have a new friend. But I had to reassure my wife that, don't worry, she's still my best friend. But the screen reader really taught me a lot of things. I'm able to do just like I used to do in finance, where I could open up Excel, do my pivot tables, browse the web, send emails, and everything like that, and all the applications on my phone. So, digital accessibility is super important. And another thing we do at Vista Center itself, we partner with many companies, especially around the Bay or around the country, and we help with their products in terms of accessibility. So, so many times, we hold focus groups or we hold one-on-one groups where we can improve the product accessibility for these companies. And another thing that Vista Center does is we have an annual Site Tech Global Conference. It's our fifth year this year, and it's a platform. It's a free virtual two-day event. It's a platform where all the companies get the chance to kind of display and showcase what the products are and how it's accessible to the blind and low-vision. So, again, I want to thank everyone here today, and I appreciate even Rania coordinating today because it really brings awareness of how digital accessibility is super important for the blind and low-vision community. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have...
We're obviously speaking to Mayor.
We're estimating.
We're helping to raise awareness in the work that you do. We have a proclamation for you. Councilmember will hold it.
And we're going to take some pictures. I'll turn you in the direction. There we go.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here today.
Thank you so much.
Hey.
Thank you for...
I appreciate how important this is.
No, thank you for all the work you do.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Have a great rest of your day.
Councilmember Ortiz, please join me at the podium, and we will recognize and proclaim National Murdered and Missing Indigenous Women Awareness Day. And I know there are, I believe there are others in the audience who will join us as well. Councilmember?
If members of the indigenous community would be willing to join us up, it'd be great. Oh, we already got to go. Hello, everybody. May is an important month of awareness for an issue facing indigenous communities across the United States, an epidemic of murdered and missing indigenous peoples. This is a crisis that is in no small part due to the long history of political and legal attacks aimed at dehumanizing and exterminating indigenous people by both the federal government and by the state of California. For years, unsolved abductions and femicides have decimated Indian country. And the complex web of bureaucracy governing indigenous nations have only served to prevent justice for the daughters, sisters, and mothers of so many. In 2016, 5,712 cases of missing and murdered indigenous people were reported in the Urban Indian Health Institute survey. And according to a study by the U.S. Department of Justice, in some tribal communities, indigenous women face murder rates 10 times higher than the national average. While much of the national attention has been on instances of gendered violence on reservations, it's important to understand that 70% of the U.S.-American Indian and Alaskan Native populations live in cities. Urban indigenous women are also suffering from violence, but oftentimes, there is insufficient data to capture the whole picture. What we know is that indigenous women disproportionately experience health disparities, housing and food insecurity, and abuse and neglect in the foster care system, Urban indigenous women are also suffering from violence, but oftentimes, there is insufficient data to capture the whole picture. What we know is that indigenous women disproportionately experience health disparities, housing and food insecurity, and abuse and neglect in the foster care system, which are major contributors to vulnerability to victimization. But we need to know more, and we need to move from awareness to action. That's why I invite you all to a panel this Friday here at City Hall. I'm co-hosting with the Indian Health Center to bring experts like Abigail Echo Hawk of the Urban Indian Health Institute and policymakers together to begin to address this crisis. I now want to hand the mic to Sonia Tetnowski, the Chief Executive Officer of the Indian Health Center of Santa Clara Valley. She is a member of the Makah tribe in Washington State and has served on the Secretary of Interior, Deb Hollands, Not Invisible Commission.
Thank you, Councilman Ortiz, and to our wonderful mayor. Many times, I'm often asked, why is this a widespread problem? There are numerous reasons, but at the forefront lie the stemming from the Indian Relocation Act and other policies. Many Native Americans do not live on tribal lands or reservations, only 22%, and many frequently frequent a lifestyle of transiency between tribal, state, county, and city lands. This presents a variety of critical issues involving reporting policies, jurisdictional complications, and communication and coordination problems between agencies. Native Americans residing in urban areas have few resources linked to their cultural and tribal communities. Indian Health Center of Santa Clara Valley works diligently with our urban Native population to provide those resources. People living in the cities fall into a pipeline of vulnerability. People of color, people experiencing poverty, people coming out of foster care systems, people lacking resources or family, people who isolate emotionally, physically, and psychologically. Poverty remains one of the most challenging aspects to contemporary urban Indian life. While I do recognize that some of our population solidly falls within middle class, every Native person I know has either experienced poverty or has a family member who is. Healthcare, housing, and homelessness remains at the top of the list of challenges. Most of the MMIP cases remain unsolved. Many are never reported or investigated. However, knowing the names of missing, murdered, and trafficked indigenous women isn't no longer enough. We need to stand up and stand together. We know the urgency of this crisis. We know there are ways forward, and we know the people and systems standing with us to do that. I appreciate the City of San Jose for being one of the leaders in that and standing with us and finding actions to address this critical issue. Thank you so much.
And if the mayor can please present the commendation.
Okay. Thank you. You guys need help? Are you okay? Okay. And for our final ceremonial item of the day, I'll invite Councilmember Davis and Councilwoman Candelas to join me. We are going to recognize and proclaim May 21st as Recommerce Day. We also have Amaro Holstein, eBay's Head of Content Strategy and Innovation.
Hi.
Welcome. Good to meet you. Today, we are proclaiming May 21st as Recommerce Day with San Jose-based company eBay. They're based in Councilmember Davis's District, District 6. eBay has empowered buyers and sellers to be part of the circular economy since its founding in 1995. The buying, selling, and trading of pre-owned goods, also known as the practice of recomerce, has become an integral part of our modern economy, providing numerous benefits to consumers and the environment. Selling pre-loved goods not only reduces waste in our carbon footprint, but also gives many people an economic opportunity to supplement their income or start a small business. In fact, Forbes just named San Jose the best place in the country to start a small business, and I believe that's in no small part due to the support system we see here today with partners like eBay. With that, along with my colleagues, we will recognize today as Recommerce Day. Now, I'd like to invite Amaro Holstein, eBay's Head of Content Strategy and Innovation, to say a few words and then accept the proclamation on behalf of the entire council. Amaro, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name's Amaro Holstein, and I'm the Head of Content Strategy and Innovation at eBay. Clearly not that tall, thank you. And as the mayor mentioned, the co-lead for the team that's worked to bring eBay to Recommerce Day to life. For more than 25 years, eBay has been the original home for recomerce, the buying and selling of pre-loved goods, and as a proud San Jose-based company that has made San Jose the capital of recomerce for 25 years as well. We're so excited and honored that the City of San Jose is making that official today as you pass this resolution declaring May 21st as Recommerce Day. Thank you to the mayor and the entire council for joining with eBay to celebrate the inaugural Recommerce Day and recognize the many benefits shopping pre-loved has for consumers and the environment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Amaro. Thanks again. It's on behalf of the council. Yes, proclaiming Recommerce Day. We'll do a photo here. All right. Thank you all. We are on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? I have one note from the administration. I don't see any council colleagues. I know the administration would like to request deferral of Item 3.6, which is approval of the terms of an agreement with OE3. So that would be deferred to the June 11th meeting.
I'll move to defer Item 3.6 and...
Second.
Okay. I don't see... Councilmember Ortiz, is your hand up?
Did you get my office's request to pull Item 2.24 for question?
That's on consent calendar. Yes, I did. We'll get to that in just a moment. Anything else on the orders of the day? Okay. Tony, do we have public comment?
Not on orders.
I'm sorry, not on orders of the day?
Not on the orders.
Okay, let's vote, please.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. Okay. We're on to the closed session report. Nora?
Thank you, mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
Thank you, Nora. Next is the consent calendar. Councilmember Ortiz, I have you down to pull Item 2.24. Any other requests to pull items from consent? Okay. Councilmember, I'll turn to you for questions or comments.
Thank you, mayor. First and foremost, I would just like to express my gratitude to the administration. It's been quite the journey for us to finalize this resolution, which has been a result of the collaborative efforts between multiple departments and council offices. I deeply appreciate everyone working together, establishing safe passageways to school for our students in severely impacted areas. At multiple school sites, the student body and administration face similar challenges, and their representatives and superintendents and trustees support this policy. To that end, I just have some additional questions about emerging issues, timelines, and potentially adding other streets surrounding different schools. So, as pressures in schools that are not part of the pilot program progressively worsen, will staff pivot to ensure a baseline level of safety?
Thank you, Councilmember John Russo, Director of Transportation. Yes, this action today is actually following through on the ordinance that the council approved previously.
Yes.
This is setting up that resolution that we need so that we can put the signs in the three pilot locations. The action that council took does allow us to add locations based on additional resolutions, so we're fully able to do that as long as there's the budget for us to actually implement that.
And then... Oh, sorry.
I was just going to say that this is coupled with the other ordinance that's the citywide oversized vehicle that we are, together with this, will be submitting a manager's budget addendum that will identify the funding and how we intend to implement those ordinances, including additional schools that may be hotspots or problem areas.
Okay, great. And what I'm trying to figure out is essentially, what's that threshold of impacts that we're going to be looking at as we determine a new school for a proposed site?
Right. It's a really good question, and that's really going to be the gist of what we're going to try to do with implementation. We are going to try to do this as a data-driven and location-specific proactive approach, and schools are going to be top of the list for areas that we're going to be looking for, that it's going to go into that trigger, what triggers the actions that we're going to do to abate some of those locations. We'll explain more of that with the MBA, but it's going to outline how we're going to use a proactive, data-driven approach to that.
And then just one final question, right? We got the whole approach to the, you know, full-bodied, you know, new site, which would be, you know, a no encampment zone around a school, but is it possible at other schools that may not be at the same level that, you know, Independence was, or, you know, the school in District 7? You know, there's other schools that have RVs around them. Is there like a baseline level of support that can be provided? Because I put in a cost estimate specifically for Joseph George Middle School in my district, and they gave us a number of like in the hundreds of thousands in order to add that as an additional site. So is there anything in between of making it a full-fledged site and no services that we could provide to these areas?
Yeah, it's a good question, yes. So, we intend to do that, and I think that number's been modified, so we've updated that, so I think we're trying to be a little bit more judicious when we're trying to add school locations, so I think we've modified that number for that budget document. But, yeah, that's what, we're going to try to do that. We know schools is a really sensitive area, and especially for the safety of kids walking to school, and these locations are some of the ones that we're going to concentrate on, so.
Okay. I just want to stress that a lot of residents in our districts are sending us emails regarding that, and hopefully, we can find a sweet spot to provide some level of base support that will not, I guess, break the bank. So, thank you so much, and I look forward to those conversations. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Councilor. Certainly, critical issue in so many of our neighborhoods. Appreciate you asking those questions. Would you like to move the consent calendar?
Thank you. I moved the consent calendar.
Great. Thank you. Tony, do we have public comment?
Yes, I have Gail Osmer and Oscar. So, please come on down. So, this is for two separate consent calendar items. Again, Gail and Oscar.
Okay, this is really a waste of my time. I know it's all to pass, but let me tell you what's going on here. Now that we have the police in business of abating RVs, does anybody know that the police now are abating camps with RVs? Does anybody up there know that they're taking cars, that people have to go to work? Does anybody know they're taking RVs where people are sleeping? This has happened over and over again. There's a policeman, his nickname Nad, took a truck from an RV because the woman wouldn't get out of it. He said to her, "I'll take you, I'll abate you, even if you're in your truck." So, this is going to happen, this Councilman Ortiz. They're going to be taking people's vans, cars. This has got to stop. I don't think the taxpayers would like that. The police are now abating people with RVs, do they? I'm paying taxes for the police to abate and harass the unhoused. There's no place for RVs to go. The city is slacking on Barriessa. They're not doing anything. They should be in there now. We need to push more RVs. People call me in tears. Before, I know this is, you're going to pass it, but something has to happen with these cops abating these people in RVs, like they did a commercial. Took RVs, took cars, people working. They take their cars because they don't have registration. They can't afford registration. Well, let's just tow them. This is happening. I had a meeting with Omar Torres and told him all about this. You need to talk to the police department, Captain Gina, Captain Paul, Chief Paul. Anyway, please, this is just getting out of hand. It's disgusting, and I get calls, people are crying. This is what you people...
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Oscar Queiroz Medrano. I'm up here to ask the council not to move any funds away from the capacity building grant for nonprofit organizations. These are the funds that we use to support the community that's up here advocating for their rights with tenant preference and other policies that we work on. We also use that money to actually support and build up the leaders that we work with, given that self-encouragement, opportunities for growth. We offer note-taking workshops. We offer an array of workshops that helps our community build up their leadership. So, we ask the council not to touch this money. If it's possible to give us more, right? Always, more is nice. But, you know, just not to move the funds that we have right now available, just because we are doing as best that we can with the limited funds that we do have, and anything else that is not given to us, it's difficult for us to keep the programming in place that helps our community. Thank you.
Back to council.
Great. Thank you. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. We're on to the land use consent. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Tony, do we have public comment on land use consent?
I have no cards.
Okay. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are on to Item 3.1, Report of the City Manager.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I do have a report today. We are so proud to celebrate the 64th Annual National Public Works Week with a theme of advancing quality of life for all. Public Works is one of the largest departments in the city with 12 divisions and a wide diversity of roles as the builders, architects, engineers, inspectors, caretakers, and administrative staff for our critical infrastructure. Our hard-working staff in each of the divisions of this multifaceted department is responsible for our roads, bridges, sanitary and storm systems, street lights, and traffic signals, as well as building community facilities like parks, fire stations, libraries, community centers, service yards, and our city hall that we're in today. Following are some highlights of Public Works' accomplishments in the last fiscal year, and I think you'll agree with me that they are quite impressive. Public Works completed 37 capital improvement project, construction projects valued at over $49 million with 88% delivered on time. They responded to more than 75,000 underground service alert marking requests to protect utilities. They maintained 100% compliance with state fleet regulations for the 3,000 vehicles and equipment within our fleet program. They completed over 60... that we do have, and anything else that is not given to us is difficult for us to keep the programming in place that helps our community. Thank you.
Back to Council.
Great, thank you. Tony, let's vote. Okay, thank you. We're onto the land use consent. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Thank you. Tony, do we have public comment on land use consent?
I have no cards.
Okay, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are on to item 3.1, Report of the City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do have a report today. We are so proud to celebrate the 64th Annual National Public Works Week with a theme of advancing quality of life for all. Public Works is one of the largest departments in the city with 12 divisions and a wide diversity of roles as the builders, architects, engineers, inspectors, caretakers, and administrative staff for our critical infrastructure. Our hard-working staff in each of the divisions of this multifaceted department is responsible for our roads, bridges, sanitary and storm systems, street lights, and traffic signals, as well as building community facilities like parks, fire stations, libraries, community centers, service yards, and our city hall that we're in today. Following are some highlights of Public Works' accomplishments in the last fiscal year, and I think you'll agree with me that they are quite impressive. Public Works completed 37 capital improvement project, construction projects valued at over $49 million with 88% delivered on time. They responded to more than 75,000 underground service alert marking requests to protect utilities. They maintained 100% compliance with state fleet regulations for the 3,000 vehicles and equipment within our fleet program. They completed over 16,000 maintenance work orders on the 400-plus city-owned facilities. Last fiscal year, Animal Care and Services, which is also under Public Works' purview, completed nearly 17,000 calls for service, performed over 4,400 low-cost spay-neuter surgeries, completed over 8,000 adoptions, transfers to rescue partners, or reunions with pet owners. These are just a very small sample of how Public Works delivers impact for our community. So I want to thank our Public Works Department leadership and staff for your dedication and service to our city. And I know a few Public Works staff are in the audience in the chambers today, and I'd like you to stand to be recognized, please. Just a few, we just have a few here. Congratulations to you all, and thank you for all of your work on behalf of the community. Thank you.
And for all that hard work, your reward is you get to sit through a city council meeting. Just kidding. Thank you all very much. On behalf of the whole council, we're grateful to you for the incredible work you do. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. That was nice. It's a big department. All right, thank you, Jennifer. That was great. Item 3.3, Approval of the Updated City Emergency Operations Plan. Ray? And I should just clarify, as Ray gets down into the box here and starts, the short presentation will cover both items 3.3 and 3.4, but we will vote on them separately. All right, Ray, whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers, city executives, and members of the audience. I am Ray Reardon. I'm the Director of the City Manager's Office of Emergency Management. As noted, I'm here to present on two items that will each take a separate city council action. Item 3.3 is to take action to adopt the updated emergency operations plan. Item 3.4 is to approve an ordinance to amend Title 8, Chapter 8.08 of the San Jose Municipal Code related to the city's emergency management organization. Typically, the emergency operations plan is updated every five years or after a major event. Well, since the city council last adopted the emergency operations plan in 2019, the city's emergency management organization has been activated 14 times. That's 12 more times than the 20 years before I got here in 2017, but there is no correlation. I want to make sure that's clear. There's been many events that have taken place due to weather, due to COVID, other events that took place, power outages, et cetera. So we've met both criteria for the approval for adoption of the updated emergency operations plan. The City of San Jose's emergency operations plan provides an overview of the city's approach to emergency operations. It identifies emergency response policies, describes a response and recovery organization, and assigns specific roles and responsibilities to city departments, agencies, and community partners. This plan also describes the role of the San Jose's emergency management organization, the use of the emergency operations center, and the coordination that occurs between the EOC staff, Department Operations Center staff, and those personnel conducting field-level activities. This plan also describes the coordination with external entities such as the operational area, better known as Santa Clara County, special districts and utilities, nonprofit and volunteer organizations, including our most, excuse me. Finally, the EOC describes how we address the whole community, including our most vulnerable communities and those with access and functional needs. The EOP also sets up the tone and guidance for, and is currently supported by, six support annexes that provide additional operational policies and procedures for how to organize and respond when we have community recovery involved, when we have to conduct damage assessment, when we have to manage debris, when we have to communicate with the public and how we do that during an emergency, evacuation operations, as well as mask care and shelter, probably the most significant functions that we provide operations to. The emergency operations plan is not intended to be a detailed plan for each individual city employee, rather umbrella plan to say how we carry out our responses. With one-time funds, the city hired the support of Whit O'Brien's consulting firm to review after-action reports from the emergencies that reached state and federal declarations of emergencies, such as the 2017 flood, 2019 public safety power shut-offs, 2020 COVID response, 2023 ongoing termination of COVID, and the 2023 storms. They also reviewed the county and state emergency plans for which we need to align, and conducted workshops and interviews with 20 city offices and departments. In the end, over 241 participants provided comments in over 31 workshops, resulting in more than 30 different revisions to the emergency operations plan and the support annexes. Over 20 outside stakeholders participated, such as the county, collaborating agencies, disaster response efforts, or cadre, the Silicon Valley Independent Living Center, the American Red Cross, I can go on, Second Harvest Food Bank. We really integrated the plan with a lot of outside agencies. What you see here in this diagram is the emergency management organization and specific functional roles that we need to carry out, following the conscripts of the standardized emergency management system and the national incident management system. SEMS, the standardized emergency management system, was born out of the Marshall School of Business at USC. Focusing on the strength of an organization comes from establishing flexibility, modular form of response, operations based on management by objectives, and that the team organizes defined actions when the emergency occurs, to assign specific roles and tasks to specific departments, specifies how work will be accomplished, provides direction on how to engage the community organizations and volunteer organizations, and finally to coordinate action with the next level of government. For item 3.4, Amendments to the Title 8, Chapter 8.08, currently called the Office of Emergency Services of the San Jose Municipal Code. The updates have not taken place on this ordinance since 1997. It's a few years back, and emergency management has evolved since then, and the city has significantly improved its services in emergency management since then. What was done with the updates was to clarify the title of what it's about. It's not about OES, but the emergency management organization. Add specific purpose statements to the ordinance, adds clarifying emergency management definitions, delineates the difference between the Director of Emergency Services, which is the city manager, and what I do as the emergency management director, revises the emergency management organization definition, revises the emergency plan definition, the role of the OEM director, as well as adds emergency operations center language and the use of that facility. On the disaster council, we updated the title to reflect what the council's typically called in other jurisdictions in the state. It updates the membership and defines functions, powers, and duties of the disaster council. With that, I promise to keep it short. So we're at the end of the presentation, and we have two actions requested today. For item 3.3 is to adopt a resolution adopting the updated City of San Jose's emergency operations plan. The second item and action is to approve an ordinance amending Title 8, Chapter 8.08, Office of Emergency Services of the San Jose Municipal Code to clarify roles and responsibilities, define key terminology, and add continuity of government as a new component of the ordinance. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate the presentation. Tony, do we have public comment?
No cards on this item.
Okay, great. Coming back to the council, Councilmember Batra.
Thank you, Ray, for presenting that, and more importantly, making the emergency operation plan updated to bring it in line with the current times and the current needs, and clarifying the roles of different organizations and definitions. This is a substantial update, and there are many, many organizations involved. Their roles are being redefined in some cases, they're being given more role. How are you going to be planning to communicate that to those organizations, whatever you want to use the terminology, education, or whatever your plans are on that?
The way we saw, thank you for the question, Councilmember. It's a good question. So as we prepared the plan, all the participants, the 241, included those outside agencies. We had the county sitting in meetings, we had cadre, we had American Red Cross. They all participated in the development of the workshops, and as that happened, and they got the various copies of the plan to review to give additional feedback, and that's why there were 30 different updates to the plan, because each time new feedback had come in, that updated the plan. We will continue now, by adopting this plan, now we have direction on doing exercises and training, which will also include those outside agencies for which we rely on in response. So that's how we socialize the plan, that's how we get folks involved, and the copies of the plan are on the public website.
That includes some kind of a study session for the council?
Yes, we will, typically after council members change with an election, we'll do the same presentation we did a year and a half ago, excuse me, for the council members.
I move to accept the updated plan.
Great, thank you. Councilor Kondelis?
Thank you, Mayor. No, Ray, appreciate your work and the effort that goes into updating our EOP to make sure that we're up to date on the critical work that often goes unsung. I have a question with regards to some concerns I've heard from our community emergency response teams, our CERT folks, specifically with regards to the storage of their equipment and supplies necessary for their training and education purposes. A lot of the times, they store it in their sheds or in their homes, but, you know, for example, in certain areas where they may not have the extra space to be able to store that, what would we say to our CERT volunteers, who are all neighborhood leaders, about this concern?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. It is a good question. It's something we work with the local members on, is where can the equipment be stored? Some have access to those facilities. We started to work with those that don't have that type of facility. We haven't identified the answer yet, but we'll continue to work with the CERT members on what kind of supplies do they really need, where can we store them, and how can we engage with them?
Great, and even if it's a shed at, you know, one of the many city facilities, whether it's a community center, a library, somewhere on-site where we can identify maybe an extra storage space that's even external to the building, so we don't have to worry about any compromises there, I think, I mean, it's fairly reasonable to be able to do that. But no, I appreciate that, and I just wanted to voice that out there for my D8 CERT leaders who have come knocking about this, so I appreciate that.
And they've knocked at our door, too.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor. Councilor Dawn?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ray, and your team putting together this report, and I know that you've done a pretty incredible job responding to, you know, a lot of our emergency, and will continue to do so because it's not if it's going to happen, but just when. One other thing I want to comment on is that with the CERT program, we have reached out to multi-ethnicity, and at this point, we're still way under par, if you will. And can you tell me, what is the approximate numbers of CERT-trained personnel in order to have our personnel out there in an emergency to accommodate multi-ethnicity and so on? Approximate numbers?
Well, since we restarted the program in 2018, remember that we had two years lost because of COVID. The program is still quite young, but we, since we re-initiated, we've had over 600 graduates from the program. In the last two years, to address your question about the multicultural it needs, as we focused courses specifically in Vietnamese, as you're aware, because you've attended a few, and Spanish, and been able to accomplish one in Chinese, so we are reaching out in multiple languages, and we continue to do that. Combined with some of the members who had had training prior to the restart, we have a little over 1,200 total CERT members now, which means that we now have a need to start helping them continue that organization with a self-managed support group.
So I would imagine if one of the CERT members, Hispanic control, is anywhere, it'd be around seven people, and so I would, the number should be in the, maybe 10,000, probably?
If you compare, the City of Los Angeles is the model, because that's where the CERT program initiated. They've established, it's a 10%, is what they've been able to do, but that program's been in place since 1986, so it's a little more mature than our program, and we plan to, our goal, too, is to get to 10%, so that'd be 100,000.
Well, thank you, and myself and my staff actually helped teach those CERT classes as well. Thank you for using the NIMS and the SIM and the ICS system to incorporate into the 20 different departments, so they'll understand especially the hierarchy and how do we get, you know, stuff done when there is an emergency. Again, thank you very much, and thank you for the report.
Great, thank you, Councilmember. Tony, let's vote on item 3.3, and then I'll entertain a motion on item 3.4. And I know we have colleagues in the back who are coming out to vote, hopefully. This is on 3.3.
I have motion passes with nine and two absent, because they didn't have the doors, but if they want to orally say...
Yes, yes.
So motion passes unanimously, 11-0.
Great, thank you, Tony. Did we have any public comment on item 3.4?
I have no cards.
Okay, coming back to the council for a motion.
Move for approval, second.
Great. Tony, let's vote on 3.4, please. Thank you.
I'm still waiting on one person. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great, thank you. We're on to item 3.5. This is the approval of the terms of an agreement with IBW, and our city manager will make some opening remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. We are very pleased to bring you an agreement on a successor memorandum of agreement, or otherwise known as an MOA, reached with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, also otherwise known as IBW Local 332. The agreement is for a three-year term through June 30, 2027, which will provide stability to our workforce. This agreement includes several items that are important for all parties and will be beneficial to our city departments and employees, such as wage increases, changes to city-paid parental leave, and other benefits. IBW notified us that the agreement has been ratified by their membership. We want to thank the IBW negotiating team for their work in reaching this agreement, which includes Nate Morris, IBW Business Representative, Chris Mog, IBW Business Representative, Christine Seedler, Rich Sagona, Daniel Devilla, and Brad Steinbach. We'd also like to thank the city's negotiating team, Elsa Cordova, Cheryl Parkman, Sarah Steele, and Walter Lynn. We'd especially like to thank the city council for their support and guidance through this process. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jennifer. Certainly good news. Do we have any public comment on item 3.5?
I have no cards.
No cards for item 3.5. Coming back to the council, Councilor Dawn.
I just have one question. How does the wage increase schedule compare to the projected CPI inflation over the next three years? And do those increase keep pace with the anticipated cost of living changes?
Elsa Cordova will come down and talk about our wage adjustments.
Hi, Councilmember Dawn, this is Elsa Cordova with the Office of Employee Relations. I don't have the number in front of me related to how this compares to CPI. I will say that the wage increases are consistent with what we agreed to when... I will say that the wage increases are consistent with what we agreed to with our unions last year, so the wages that you see in the tentative agreement are those that we have for many of our other unions here at the city.
Thank you. Move for approval.
Great, thank you. Let's see any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Just as a reminder, we deferred item 3.6 to the June 11th meetings. We are on to our final agendized item, which is item 5.1, a report on bids and a word of contract for major streets resurfacing. Do we have any public comment?
I have no cards.
Okay, coming back to the Council.
Move for approval, second.
Great, motion and a second. Seeing no further hands, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. We're on to open forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any city business that was not on today's agenda. Do we have any comment cards?
Yes, I have two, Olivia and Bob. And you can come in any particular order, just first person to the microphone, go ahead and approach it.
Okay, Olivia and Bob, free to come on down.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Adiski. I'm the president of San Jose City since 1962. I've lived in my house currently 46 years. And my neighbor, it's just become pretty wild. I live on the southwest side of San Jose, on the other side of 85 in Camden. Seems like people there have no respect for residential streets. And I've asked for speed bumps to be put down my street, and I was told that can't do that. I've asked for a speed, what do you call it, the signs that as you come by, it's a speed trap sign, and nobody said that you could do that. So I'm kind of at a loss. I live on a quiet street that's only three blocks long, and people go down that street, sometimes upwards of 60 miles an hour. And that's crazy. We have two schools, which are pre, from kindergarten to sixth, within five blocks either direction. And then we have a high school nearby, Lee High School. And with all the children going around, you know, these people on the way to work or on the way home or whatever, they don't like to slow down. I'm out there watering my yard, and I sometimes just get the hose and I just spray the cars as they're flying down the street. I know you're not supposed to do that, but I figure water's not gonna hurt anybody. But it's the only thing that I can do as a citizen, and all I want is, the way we used to have it, is on Tuesdays and Thursdays, San Jose Police Department would set out motorcycle police with...
I'm sorry, that's your time?
Sure, I appreciate you coming. You're very fortunate that your council member's actually the chair of our Vision Zero Task Force and may be able to connect with you offline. And if she's unavailable, Stephen on my team will also get your contact information. Did we, but I need to see if we have anyone else from the public who's gonna comment during public comment here, or open forum?
Sir, if you just wait for a minute, I'll come down and talk to you.
Thank you for coming into our council meeting.
And the other one was Olivia.
Do we have an Olivia who wanted to speak?
Looks like she may have left.
Okay, that's our last commenter. We are adjourned. Thank you all.